Good evening and welcome to the December 2022 regular council meeting for the Village of Blackseaber. This is our last official council meeting for the Village of Blackseaber, and I'll call the meeting to order at 6:34 PM. Now, thanks CHCO for being here tonight. We have Patrick Watt doing the camera, and Dale Wells is probably doing the sound tonight. And of course, we have Vicky Hogarth in the very back. She's the star of the CHCO, so it's an honor to have you here in Blackseaber tonight. In attendance tonight, we have Kara Hat, our Assistant Clerk, our CEO, Jason Gadat. And we'll start a call to order, record of attendance as we have all of council... No, we don't. We have Counselor Wells, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Libby, and our Deputy Mayor here tonight. Okay, I'll look for any business arising tonight. Nothing at all tonight? If not, we'll move for approval of the agenda, and I'll look for a motion from the floor for that.
Be it resolved that the agenda for December 21st, 2022, regularly held council be accepted and approved?
We have a motion by Counselor Libby, a second by Counselor Wells. Okay, I saw your arm moving. Just looking for my rules of leading thing. I forgot to bring along... Oh, there they are right there. I always keep this right beside me, the procedure of bylaw. Okay. We have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And that's passed. Disclosure of conflict of interest. This is your chance to disclose any conflict of interest on the agenda tonight. If not, we move on to six, the approval of a council meeting, council minutes, 6.1, the regular council meeting of November the 16th, 2022.
Be it resolved, minutes on regular council meeting of council on November 16th, 2022, as pre-circulated, be approved and filed.
Motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Wells. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passed unanimously. 6.2, special meeting of council on November the 24th, 2022. Be a motion on the floor for that?
Be it resolved, minutes on regular council meeting of council on November 16th, 2022, as pre-circulated, be approved and filed.
We have a motion on the floor by Counselor Wells, seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. That's passed unanimously. Staff reports, fire department reports, we have that tonight here. Does somebody have that in front of them? Counselor Libby, you would like to give that tonight?
So for November 2022, there were three rubbish grass fires, three public service mutual aid calls, and one alarm, no fire, for seven calls for the month of November. And compared to last year, at three calls for the month of November. Be it resolved that the fire department report for the month of November 2022 be approved and filed.
We have a motion by Counselor Libby, seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passed unanimously. Building inspectors' report. Do we have Counselor Thompson?
So it looks like for the month of November, there was no building permits issued. Looks like there were nine occurrence reports, which there's an inspection log there. And also, one stop work order was issued in November. So be it resolved, the building inspectors' report for the month of October and November, 2022, be approved and filed.
There's a motion on the floor by Counselor Thompson, seconded by... Okay, Deputy Mayor just beat by a second. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passed unanimously. 7.3, the public works report. Somebody went to Counsel... I'm going to go to Counselor Wells.
Chlorine flow meter in the fill of buildings and lagoon checks are done daily. Lift stations checked every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Water test done every second Tuesday, and sewer test done once a month. The garbage was checked in the bins around the village daily, and garbage collection every Thursday. Recycling and pickup as per calendar on Wednesdays. And the water, sewer water, we have dead backflow inspections, and they put winter markers on hydrants. Three tons now ready for winter. At the condenser, we had the... At the arena, we had the condenser pump replaced, and whiteboards on the arena. I think they were just put on the arena. New score clock arrived, repairs to the entrance door, and repairs to leak in dressing room number three. All the roadwork was done asphalt around the municipality, and the one ton is also ready for winter. And miscellaneous preparations for the 50th anniversary celebration that was done. Removed vet banners, collected garbage bins, benches, picnic tables, and put away for the winter. Mixing of sand and salt and sand bit for the roads, and they put up Christmas lights. And thumbs up to the voice for the lights, they did a great job.
Absolutely, no, that's... I was going to mention that to Counselor Wells, and you get it. The guys did a great job, didn't they? The harbor looked very nice. Yes. Me, on top of the regular work, and then taking time just to put up lights. I mean, the guys have done very well. And of course, this past week was their first storm. They were out doing the roads, and it's sort of them too, so kudos to them. Any questions or comments on that report? If not, I'm going to look for a motion to...
Be it resolved, the public works report for the month of November 2022, be approved and filed.
Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any questions or comment on that report? If not, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. That's passed unanimously. CEO report. Mr. Gadat.
Thank you, worship. So as far as what's been going on here with the village, you know, we've been getting ready for, of course, the winter activities with Public Works, going over equipment and getting things in order there. Certainly, a lot of what I've been doing over the last few weeks is regards to the arena upgrade project that's ongoing, and will continue to be ongoing over the next year or so, and lots of updates there. It's a good situation to have the funds to do all the renovations that were... that are needed, and certainly to try to change the look of that arena. More importantly, especially for the future, to put more years on that arena. We've also been really working on reform. Most of my time has been spent on finalizing the budget. That's all been submitted to the province. We haven't really heard much back on the budget as of yet. And reviewing the bylaws that were submitted from the province, and going over accounts for the transition and merging of the village and the town all into the one entity. You know, certainly, kudos to the staff here at the village and town. I've been really working diligently to... For that January the first date, merging all the accounts and making sure that we're looking at every area as opportunity. You know, so we're also with the amalgamation or reform. You know, this office here will be relocated into the municipal building at One School Street in St. George, so it's a bit of a winding down of what we're doing here. Putting files in storage, getting ready to have staff moved into St. George, get them located there, doing renovations into that building and School Street as well, making sure that, you know, we have a mayor's office actually, once again, in St. George, which is going to be nice, having the mayor having some accessibility for the constituents, so that's good. So it's, yeah, it's been really... It's been a bit of a bittersweet because, you know, certainly me, you know, I'm a native guy from Blackseaber, going through this process of sort of being the last person in this chair, it's been sort of one that's, you know, I've had to step back a little bit once in a while, but I certainly want to take the moment if I can, you worship, just to sort of give thanks to staff of the Village of Blackseaber in the past, and staff of the present that's doing a great job with this amalgamation. I certainly want to highlight Deanna Hunter. She's done a great job over for many decades serving in this role, and, you know, we still see a lot of the great things that she did in helping an assistant counsel in those for many decades, so certainly want to acknowledge all the work she did as well. Heather Chase came in as well and did a good, fine job. So others along the way, you know, certainly thank you to all of them for holding this office, and, you know, certainly we got to look forward with great optimism. I think that the project and the work this council has done to get that funds for the arena will certainly put it in a great position for many years to come. You know, we've got some great representatives from Blackseaber on this new council, and I think Blackseaber will be well represented, and, you know, we certainly will continue to do great things in this community, so, you know, I'm going to be very optimistic for the future.
I thank you, Mr. Gadat, and I say you're doing a great job, and especially with the arena, it's great to see somebody taking the care. I do know that when you walk into that door, every time, you see your grandfather picture on the wall there, so that must mean a lot too, so it's great to see the special care be going on. I know our Deputy Mayor, it says baby the arena, and it's great to have your care going on there as well, as well as all council for sure. At this moment, I'll look for a motion on the floor.
Be it resolved, the CEO report for the month of November 2022, and to date for December 2022, be approved and filed.
We have a motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Libby. Question or comment on that report? Just quite a bit on that report. Any questions or comments on them? Nope, everything's good and excellent. We'll move on to the Southwest New Brunswick, which we don't have a report tonight. The only thing I can say about that, because I was at Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission dinner slash meeting last week, and there was a couple of things came out of it, which is good for our area. Some of their meetings have been moved out of Lawrence Station now, their regular meetings, and moved to the St. Stephen area, so we don't have to travel up into the woods and where the moose are at nighttime and stuff, so that's one thing, was done that night. And the other thing is that the Service Commission has agreed, and they are looking for to open up an office in our area in Eastern Charlotte, instead of just one in St. Stephen. Now we'll have one at our end too, so they're working on that for next year as well. So for one small meeting, we did get a couple of things for this area. We move on to the 7.6, the YMCA. Mr. Hanspacher, are you here tonight? It's great to have you here tonight. I really appreciate you coming in. YMCA, I've been hearing all kinds of good stuff, and maybe you can let us all know what's going on.
Good evening, Mayor Craig and council. So just to go over a little bit of what we've done over the last month. November, we ended with 250 people, which is an increase from October, so we're pretty excited about that. Over the last month, I've met with several people to go over different fundraising opportunities and different programs that we're looking at implementing in the new year. We have a new program that we're looking at getting started here in Blackseaber, hopefully in January, if not in February, which is called CHEFS, which is a basic teaching kids the basic way to cook, I guess. And then we're looking at Zumba. We're still looking at Zoomers on the Go for exercising in the community. And then for program numbers, December started out really strong. We've had craft nights, and then we've had the winter carnival, which was this past weekend, which was really successful. We had 175 people come out to that, even though it was extremely messy out there. Everyone seemed to have a really good time, and the games were a success with people. I've heard some really great feedback from that, so that's really nice. We've served over 400 people in December alone, which now leads to we're well over 1,000 people in the past couple months or a few months, so that's really nice. We're in the process of hiring someone right now for our girl that's going on maternity leave, so that's hopefully going to be finished within the next week or two. And we've purchased some new sports equipment that we can do for the Y game nights, and then we've also purchased some things for the Patrick Connors recreational complex as well. Yeah, overall, it's been a very successful month. The winter carnival was great, our craft nights have been great, movie nights has been really great. We've had over 20 volunteers this past month as well. A lot of people came out to help with the winter carnival, so, yeah, it's been a pretty successful month, I would say.
Awesome.
I'll go to council at this point. Well, I guess I'll entertain a motion first, and then we'll go to question. I'll entertain a motion to accept this report.
Be it resolved that the YMCA report for the month of November and to date, month of December 2022, be approved and filed.
Your motion by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Libby. Now we go to question or comment? Any question or comment, Mr. Hanspacher? Deputy Mayor.
Well, it's great to see all the pictures and all the events on the Facebook page. I would like for the public to get out and like the page more, so we can try to spread the news. Let's... You always hear people saying, "Well, I didn't know that was going on," but today, social media is pretty easy, you just go hit like, so.
Exactly.
No, excellent job.
Yeah, I think too, starting next month, you'll be giving your reports for Eastern Charlotte, so that'd be doing the whole, one meeting for the whole area. So that might get the word out a little bit better too, having... We'll be doing the McAdamic Center over there, so we'll be doing that. So that way, it might get the word out a little bit better too. But you're doing a great job, and everybody's going to be happy to... The more we get the numbers up, the better. We'd like to see that building being used all the time.
Yeah, it's a great spot for it.
Exactly. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a few seconds of those comments. I think Saturday, I guess, the winter carnival with my kids and my family, very good event, very well planned and executed, and everybody looked to be having lots of fun to me, so great to see all the young kids and families out around Blacks and utilizing the facility. Excellent work.
Thank you very much.
If that's all, I thank you very much for coming. I'll look... Take it to a vote. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. And that's passed unanimously. Accounts, budget figures.
Be it resolved, council, budget figures for period ending November 30th, 2022?
Counselor Libby making that motion, seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. That's passed unanimously. 8.2, accounts payable.
Be it resolved, council, through the total, accounts payable? And/or payable for the month of November in the amount of $228,484.49, payables to date for the month of December 2022 in the amount of $73,257.30.
We have a motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Wells. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passed unanimously. That takes us right up to, as far as I know, councilors concerned, there's nothing else on the docket that I see. So moving right along, tonight, our thoughts go out to the family of the late Mr. Leon Joseph Babino, husband of Margot Porter Babino, passing away on November 23rd, 2022. Prior to his period of failing health, Leon worked 20 years at the Acadia Sea Plants in Penfield, and prior to that, he worked a number of years in the aquaculture industry as a night watchman at various sites. Leon loved music and loved playing guitar and frequented the local jam sessions such as on Sunday at Stella Maris Hall. He had especially had a passion for bluegrass music, was a member of the New Brunswick Bluegrass Association. He also had another passion. Close to his heart was the classic and vintage automobiles. Both he and his classic black Mustang, pink Ford Fairlane belonged to the Valley Cruisers Car Club. On behalf of the council, our sympathies are also sent out to the family of Edward Jean Camo, husband of the late Donna Maxine Moses Camo, who passed away unexpectedly at Eddie's residence in St. Stephen on November the 27th, 2022. Prior to his retirement, Eddie came to Blackseaber in the early 1960s to work at Connors Brothers, where he later became a machinist. In 1973, he went on to work for the Lake Utopia Paper, where he worked for 26 years as a millwright until his retirement in 1999. Eddie also worked as a funeral assistant at St. George Funeral Home for a number of years, as well as a longtime area agent for Smet Monuments, two firms which he was proud to be associated with. He was community minded, to say the least. He was a former member of the Blackseaber Fire Department, as well as a volunteer ambulance driver. Eddie was a member of the Stella Maris Catholic Church in Blackseaber, where he was very active for a number of years on church council, and was also the chairman of the cemetery committee. He will be fondly remembered for being behind many projects at the church, such as the annual church fair and the acquisition of Stella Maris Hall. He was a proud member of the Knights of Columbus Number 11569. For many years, he was the first grand knight in that chapter, and also was a fourth degree grand knight. Our thoughts and prayers go out tonight to the family of Marlene Shirley Jessison, who passed away on December 13th. Born in Blackseaber, New Brunswick, on May 9th, 1935, she was the daughter of the late Basil and Della Levitt Jessison. Marlene is survived by two sons, Brian Jessison of St. John and Stuart Jessison of Frederton. Her daughters Jocelyn Bradford of St. George, Heather Bradford of Back Bay, Sandra Belleville of Blackseaber, and Loretta Gelpen of Spring Hill, Nova Scotia. Marlene was the last surviving member of her immediate family. Prior to retirement, Marlene worked for Connors Brothers as a packer, and later as a janitor in the packing room. Marlene was a faithful and devoted member of the Pentecostal Lighthouse Church here in Blackseaber, a church and church family she enjoyed attending, and she truly loved serving her Lord. I want to congratulate my partner Heather Dewar's sister, Megan Coates, originally from St. Stephen, on being promoted to commander in the Canadian Navy on the Halifax Class Frigate HMCS Regina. Her husband is also a captain in the Navy as well. To note, there have been only a handful of women who have commanded a major warfare vessel such as a frigate, and it's awesome to see somebody from St. Stephen rise to that position. Wish to congratulate the new Eastern Charlotte Council, Mike Thompson, Terry Lee, Alexa Detarakas, Adam Hat, Wayne McQuarrie, Darrell Tid, David Hat, and Lisa McKay, who all were sworn in this past Monday evening and officially take over on December 31st at midnight. This past month, I helped host not one, but two telethons. The first one raised in excess, I believe, over $16,000, and the other one was over in excess of over $70,000 for the families of Charlotte County. I attended the Christmas dinner at the Penfield Lions Hall. I attended the Eastern Charlotte Chamber of Commerce Dinner and Social, and is glad to see many new members of the chamber, including ones from here in Blackseaber attend that dinner. I also attended the informal meeting and supper for the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission, in which I brought up them opening up an office in Eastern Charlotte, which I just mentioned earlier. I attended the first Blackseaber Girl Guides meeting, and spoke to the girls, and answered many questions. A big shout out to Claudette Malonson for reviving the Sparks Brownies and Guides back in Blackseaber. And I got a whole bunch of cards there. I left here, and they gave me a whole bunch of Christmas cards. Each one of them drew them up themselves, and I got those this past week. I also attended the 2022 graduation of the Workplace Essential Skills Program in St. George, and spoke to the graduates and presented their certificates. I attended the tree lighting ceremony in St. George a couple weeks ago. It was a darn cold night, but the music was awesome, and it was put on by the Filipino choir and Hot Chocolate from the town of St. George. And our manager, he's the one that you let the lights in there that night. It's probably the coldest place I've ever seen. The wind, it was on top of the hills, the wind was just blowing. As well, I attended another Christmas dinner yesterday for the Community Living Center here in Blackseaber. It was great food and wonderful people to share the afternoon with. And as our manager was talking about past managers, I also want to mention the past mayors of Blackseaber. In 1972, TA Glynnie served as Blackseaber's first mayor until 1980. In 1980, Ellis A. Mason became mayor until 1986. In 1986, Kenneth Hooper became the longest-serving mayor and served until 2004. It was a total of 18 years. In 2004, Teresa James was elected mayor and served 17 years until 2021. Okay, one more thing to mention tonight. I'm going to go to the Deputy Mayor while I'm looking for my next notes.
So Saturday, Christmas Eve, there will be Santa will be coming back to the village, and the old sleigh will be pulling them around, and Mrs. Claus. Be from 2:00 to 3:00 at the Main Street Park. I believe Santa is going to go to the nursing home up first for a little stop, and then come back here for 2:00 to 3:00 at the Main Street Park. If it is rain or messy, then it'll be at the arena. Every Monday, the events will be posted on the Facebook page of the village, as far as what's going on at the arena. Like Tuesday, there's free skate. Thursday's free skate. Friday's public skating. So if you go on the Facebook page for the village, you'll see every Monday that'll be posted, and what's going on over the Christmas holidays. And on the 31st, New Year's Eve, there'll be a skating party at the rink. So from 2:00 to 4:00, if you want to come, lace up your skates and say goodbye to 2022 and welcome 2023. So, yeah, that's as far as events going on. I will say, it's bittersweet this week, I guess, you know, sworn in as a new council, but this is the last meeting of the council of Village of Blackseaber. And those last couple of years, I tell you, we've had a great crew here, and it's been great to see the direction of the village and where we put it, so we should be all proud as this crew, so it's a shame that everybody isn't just moving to in town, but I want to say thank you anyway to all the mayor and the rest of the councilors, so.
I'll go back to me, because I did have a few more things to say, and I just couldn't find my paper. This past year, Blackseaber has lost many people who have passed away, and I sent out tonight again our sympathies to the families. For Christmas time will be a very challenging time when a loved one isn't there, and I want to note that Blackseaber this past year lost an icon, his worship Ken Hooper, who served as mayor of Blackseaber for over 18 years, so he just passed away this past year. Tonight, as this council term comes to an end, I have mixed feelings as well. I'm going to miss working with a great council, who has only really just begun, and we will never be able to see what else we will be able to complete, and that's a darn shame. And I know it could have been a lot more. I am honored and proud to have been able to be part of this council, the Deputy Mayor Adam Hat, Counselor Jerry Wells, Counselor Jordan Thompson, Counselor Amber Levitt, and Counselor Ashley Levitt. It was a short ride, but it was truly successful. Saying that, I am excited to begin the next step in working with another great council as 2023 begins. It will be the biggest challenge in my political career, but the people of Eastern Charlotte have sent me a remarkable council that just got sworn in this past Monday evening. As we close out, I cannot thank Kara Hat and Bambi Scott Levitt enough. I am so fortunate that these two will be part of the new team of Eastern Charlotte. I want to express mine and council's thanks to a wonderful and dedicated Public Works crew. There are Jamie Malonson, Frank Richard, Drew Dugan, Neil Leekfold, Norm Lambert, and of course, their leader Ricky Levitt. Every one of these gentlemen, I am proud to say, will be part of the new municipality of Eastern Charlotte. I thank our CEO, Jason Gadat, for coming on board these last few months and making sure we got across the finish line. As well, Jason will be part of the new Eastern Charlotte team, and I feel... No, I take that back. I don't feel, I know. I know we're in good hands moving ahead with Jason as the CEO of Eastern Charlotte. I as well have to thank every citizen of Blackseaber for putting their faith in me as mayor, and our councils, for it has all been because of you. We served you faithfully, the best of our ability, and with limited time. And lastly, to everybody in Blackseaber, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I'll go to Counselor Libby.
I just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone, and, you know, same to everything John and Adam's mentioned. It's been a really interesting experience, and we've accomplished a lot, so I'm proud of that, but I'm also excited to see what the new council will do, and Eastern Charlotte, what Eastern Charlotte will be. And I just encourage the community to get out there and get engaged, and make sure you're talking to your representatives, and they hear what you would like to see for Eastern Charlotte. And just get out there and get involved.
Thank you, Counselor Wells.
Counselor Wells. Your chance to watch my last dance. Turn your mic on, yeah.
I got to thank all the council and John, your worship, for the time I spent in here and trying to learn what you folks knew already, and thank you for putting up with me, I guess, so.
We're very lucky to have you.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Thompson.
More of the same, I guess, just Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and it's been a pleasure to work with each and every one of you, including, you know, Jason, our manager, and Kara, and all the staff. It is bittersweet, I guess, for sure, but I have good optimism for the future. I know we're going to continue to do good things for the village, and we're well represented with the mayor and a counselor from, with Adam here from Blackseaber, so, and Jason as well, I guess, our manager, so, yeah, no, it's been a pleasure to work with each and every one of you, and again, yeah, just Merry Christmas, and, yeah.
You've been staying on with the seat, hasn't it happened?
That's right, yeah, actually, yeah. Yeah, so you'll probably be... You'll still probably be hearing from me a little bit.
Which is great, right? I love this, having you as part of the new council, that's one of the bad things, we can't take everybody along. But, so I'm glad that, as Counselor Libby... But, but, so I'm glad that, as, as Council Libby said, people should be getting involved and having people be part of either committees of council or help load, so.
Yeah, there's, it sounds like there's lots of good, positive things in the works, and, you know, I think there'll be lots of opportunity for anybody to volunteer on any committee, and, you know, hopefully we'll get lots of good things going here in the, in the Eastern Charlotte region, so.
That's great.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. This brings us to question period. Any questions from the, Maude, do you have a question, Maude? No, we got Maude right in the back there, she's, if not, if not, look for, our next meeting is, never, and, okay, we move on, and, and we move on to a motion for adjournment.
It is all, it needs to be adjourned at 7:04 P. M.